Everyone, today is March the 25th. This is the Salina City Commission regularly scheduled meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
Would all that are able please rise and join me for the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today we start our meeting with the citizens' forum. This is an opportunity for any citizens of Salina to come forward to the microphone and bring forward any issue or comment that you would have for us. And we also have a proclamation that'll occur during this forum. So do we have any citizens that would like to address the commission today? Sir, please come forward and state your name and your address.
My name's Dan Audi, 146 South Third is my address. Is this the point in time where we talk about the things that are on the address?
Yeah, actually, no. I just noticed that and put it together. At 8.2, there will be opportunity for a public comment.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. Do we have any other citizens that would like to come before the commission? And this is the time for the proclamation then. Yes, please.
Okay. Good morning. What, what afternoon? I have board meetings this morning.
It was a good morning. It was a good morning, yeah.
What we are requesting is that the city of Salina have a proclamation designating April as Patriot Month. Some of the program that we at Military Affairs Council have that has been really successful is the Patriot Business Program whereby businesses who offer a military discount or some sort of value to military ID card holders get free marketing and promotion under the designation of the Patriot Business Program. That's short and sweet.
Uh huh.
Well, what we're doing is taking this program across the state and we're working with the Kansas National Guard and all of the Military Affairs Directors across Kansas to really not only implement this program but various events to recognize service members and their families and to just increase, you know, the efforts of civilians appreciating service members. And so, if you might. One of the things that we have coming up is this Saturday, we're kicking off Patriot Month with the Easter egg scramble. And it's all red, white, and blue eggs. And we have over $15,000 worth in offers and prizes. And then following that, we are going to have patriotic pie bomb fundraising event, which Aaron has agreed to get a pie in his face.
Well, only if I win the votes. Yeah.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
No. And then that evening, we're having another glow-in-the-dark Easter egg hunt at the bombers game. Following that, in, on April 20th, we have a Patriot Business Shopping Day. And we're going to be bussing down 100 service members' wives from Fort Riley. And we're opening it up to local service members to go shopping at all these businesses. And then on May 4th, we are having an appreciation. The Smoky Hill Air National Guard, their, the range is going to be giving back to these businesses for their support. And we're going to have a big cookout. So this is something we'd like to do every year in Salina. But we're setting this model for other communities to follow. And in about two weeks, the Kansas National Guard is going to come down here and they're doing a press conference to recognize us as having the most supportive military community in Kansas. And this is just another way we can increase the support here and statewide.
Where is the Easter egg hunt?
The Easter egg hunt is going to be at Oakdale Park. And we partner with Seaport Airlines. So we are going to be having free flights we're giving away and lots of other fun things.
Wow, excellent. And then before we let you go, if one of you would like to read the proclamation for us.
I can do that. Proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas. Whereas we as a community are indebted to those who serve and have served to protect us, their sacrifices should not be overlooked. The act of taking care of our own begins with us and our community and rises above individual agendas. Helping those who serve or have served strengthens our community, honors our fallen, and ensures the willingness of others to serve. And whereas the sacrifices that members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas honest patriotism requires knowledge and understanding of our military and our heritage. And whereas the mission of Patriot Month is to enhance relationships and foster a heightened understanding between Salina's military and civilian communities by encouraging businesses and individuals to participate in the Patriot Business Program and events. Whereas not only in Patriot Month, but thereafter, we shall advocate, promote, and support military interests in an effort to have the strongest bond between our military and civilian communities in the United States of America. Whereas the month of April has been selected for this display of patriotism.
It is my honor to sign this. And I thank both of you and everybody that's behind you on this initiative for what you're doing and making this proclamation happen and the tie that you have towards the business community, the military community, and citizens of Salina. I think it's an honor to sign this proclamation. I have a copy of it right up here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Today we do not have any other proclamations or awards. So that'll move us into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4353, Requesting Vacation of 30-foot Plotted Restricted Access on Lot 3, Block 2 of the Riffle Edition, plus the abutting vacated rideway to allow a right-in, right-out driveway opening on the west side of South Ninth Street, a distance of 515 feet south of Schilling Road. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 13-10,672.
I'd like to open the public hearing on this matter. And we have both Mr. Andrew and Mr. Stack listed who would like to bring it to us. I assumed it was you, Mr. Andrew.
I've got an update for the commission here. If you'll recall, you had held a public hearing on January 28, 2013. And at that hearing, you reviewed a petition filed by Premer Brothers Properties, which is the new owner of the former Popeyes Restaurant site. And they filed a petition requesting that you approve a 30-foot break in the restricted access along the west side of South Ninth Street. At that hearing, staff expressed concern that approval of an individual curb cut for an individual lot could set a precedent for future requests for individual business driveways on outlots up and down South Ninth Street. Mr. Ken Wasserman, who was representing the petitioners, indicated that they were receptive at looking at a potential redesign of that driveway so it could function truly as more of a shared access drive or connector road between Riffle Drive and Ninth Street that would benefit multiple properties. So you approved a motion on January 28 to continue the public hearing on this petition to this date and directed the applicant to provide staff with their revised plan drawings for review by the 11th of March so that we could make a report on those. Staff did meet with petitioner and with Mr. Wasserman. We discussed redesign options, but there's been no revised plan received at this time. And we understand that Mr. Wasserman may plan to request an additional continuance of this hearing to a future meeting. In response to that, your options at today's meeting would be you could vote to deny the petitioner's request. If that were, this petition was denied, that would not preclude either Premer Brothers or somebody else coming back at a later future date to file a new petition in the future. You could grant the petitioner more time and continue the public hearing, but it would need to be done to a specified future meeting date. And at that meeting date, allow a modified design to be considered at that meeting. You could deny the petitioner's request and direct them to pursue a public street option. Or you could continue the public hearing to a future meeting date if there are other options that you want to see explored or there are other options presented by the petitioner. But with that, I, the update is that we do not have a revised plan or drawing to present to you today.
Any questions of staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a public comment? Mr. Wasserman?
Ken Wasserman, 213 South Santa Fe. I represent the applicants. And we would like 60 days. This has turned out to be not quite as simple as we had thought. We are in the process of designing this, but realistically, it's, in order to meet with Dean and staff enough ahead of time to give them an idea, it's at least going to take 60 days before we'll be ready for a hearing.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Mr. Wasserman?
No.
Any other public comment on this item? Either for Mr. Gage or Mr. Andrew or Mr. Binkston. If, if this matter is not continued, under Option 1, the petition could be denied and it can just start over at any point in time, not pinned to any specific date. Is that correct? Whereas if we grant the continuance and something happens, then we could be in the process of having to re-grant a continuous. But is there a filing process and fee that would be adding a burden on if that action's taken?
I'm assuming there's a fee. I'll refer to Mr. Andrew for that question.
That would be correct. If you were to deny this instead of continue it, then this file would be closed out. They'd have to file a new petition, a new petition fee at some later date. And we would start the notice period over.
Okay.
And basically start the process over as a new petition.
Okay. That's what I had assumed. I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that.
If we continue 60 days, can you give us a Monday date that's about 60 days out?
You'll be on vacation in Tahiti.
It would be May 20th or June 3rd. The 27th is a holiday. The 20th or June 3rd.
Any other questions? Bring the matter back to the commission for any discussion and action. I guess I did have one more question. Would we need to leave the public hearing open then for that, that 60 days or up until that next meeting? And not close out that public hearing at this time, I would assume?
Looking to Mr. Andrew quickly to recall whether we opened or simply continued at the out, at the initial setting.
I believe the motion was to continue the January 28th public hearing to this date.
So a similar motion would be the most...
A similar motion to continue this to the June 3rd.
Okay.
Meeting would, would be the appropriate response if that's the direction you want to go.
Okay.
Mayor, I move that we continue the public hearing until June 3rd, 2013, and direct the petitioner to modify their petition and plan to redesign and/or relocate their proposed driveway. So it would be located and designed to function as a true shared access drive and not as a driveway serving an individual parking lot. And this would give them adequate time to finish that design and to meet with staff regarding that issue.
Second, sorry.
Go ahead.
Second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on this matter until June 3rd. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion to continue until June 3rd carried 5-0. We move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 18, 2013. Item 6.2, award of contract for the 2013 ADA ramps, project number 132960, to Davis Concrete Construction, amount of $40,645.90 with a 3% construction contingency of $1,219.38.
Any items the commissioner wishes pulled from the consent agenda?
I just wanted to ask if that total in the budget is 40,000 for ADA ramps? Is that the total for...
I think it's 50,000. Right under fiscal note.
Yeah. Commissioner, was the question whether the total budgeted, what the total budget it is?
Yeah, she just pointed that out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 50,000.
Are we about to the place where we completed most of the ramps on the streets?
That was going to be my...
We used to have 100,000 in there over here.
Yeah, and, and so we're down to 50. But last time we had that question asked, I'm going to speculate it was about three or four years ago, and we were somewhere between 50 and 60 percent based on our GIS estimation, our mapping system. I'm going to say we're probably close to high 50 percents maybe. What do you think, Dan?
Tried to come up with that on our GIS. Around 4,000 ramps and we're five to 600 left. So I mean, I guess it's almost like it's, seems like from our mapping, that's what it's, we're getting closer.
So 600 remaining?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So we're a higher percentage than I anticipated then?
We are, we think so. We appreciate the, you know, half, we're, we think we're over half, but are we 75 or 80? It's kind of, we're still, it's something that we seem to find more ramps a lot throughout the city. But we have a, we have over 4,000 of them on the GIS layer. And it looks like they're, we've tried to cover most of them. So we're, if we did 50 a year...
If we get all of them, we'll have to go back through and fix them.
We hope they last. That would be the hope. They're bricks and they hope they last.
If people had quit, used them as a driveway to their front yard, that would really help. Yeah. We'll cover that one later.
Yeah, so I guess just, I mean, 600, 700, it seems like, you know, 50 a year, so that's another over 10 years. But it's still, it seems like you can see the light at the end of them. I mean, it's, there's a chance.
Yeah. It's certainly something that in any budget year of the commission, as you see the city getting closer, if you'd like to say, well, let's allocate more money towards that so we can try to get that done a little sooner and kind of check that off. For the most part, we could certainly do that.
Well, it seems like the bids have been coming in the last couple of years lower than anticipated. And that's why I kind of wondered if at least we could get them up to that... I mean, I don't, I'm not a bid guy, so I don't know what the bid process is, but you almost wonder, say, how many can you do for 50,000? You know, might be the way to go. Because, you know, here we could have spent another 9,300 and some and, you know, potentially done another, I don't know what they cost per, on the average, but...
500-ish?
About 500. So, you know, we could have done another 10 of, or another 20 of them or so, you know?
Yeah, I'm assuming we could identify locations and go back and see if they'd honor the, the rate.
Sure.
And bring that back to you if you'd like that.
I don't know. I mean, it seems as we try to get through it, maybe that's a thought.
Yep, with the budgeted funds. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll do that for you.
We'll do. I'm sure Bob Davis would enjoy that, since...
Yeah. Second?
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carried 5-0. We move on to development business.
Item 7.1, Application Number Z94-2A, Requesting a Change in Zoning District Classification from PC 3 to PC 5, An Approval of Amended Site Plan Development Plan to Allow Outdoor Equipment Rental Display and Storage to Be Added to the Waters True Value Hardware Store Located at 460 South Ohio Street. Sub-Item 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 13-10,686.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you is a request to amend a planned commercial zoning district that's located at the southwest corner of Greeley and Ohio. And we may have made our report a little more complex by trying to explain what happened in 1994. But the gist of it is that in the C3 retail district, your merchandise primarily has to be indoors inside the store. The exception to that is a Walmart or a Kmart or a Dylan's can go out in the spring and have a seasonal garden center outdoors in their parking lot. And it's supposed to be limited to 15% of the floor area of their store. This particular proposal, when it was brought before the Planning Commission, City Commission initially, the outdoor display area for the Earth Care branch of this business was actually larger than the floor area of the store. So it was done as a planned commercial district to allow for the enlarged display and sales area, which is primarily south and southwest of the, the store area with this being the store and then these being out, outdoor display and sales areas. If you've been to the property recently, there's been a major store renovation project that's been done. As part of that, the floor plan was changed around. And Mr. Jim Waters, the owner with the changes in the home improvement and hardware business and the closure of a local equipment rental business, decided he wanted to expand the offerings of equipment that could be rented at this particular store location. And he was of the belief that size of the, some of the equipment, an outdoor storage area was needed to store and display that equipment. It's not something that you can hand over the counter. You either have to push or drive. So we met with Mr. Waters and Mr. Hayworth as, as a follow-up to the renovation project. And we basically, on page three, identified the six reasons why we are here in front of you today. And one is that the, the proposed outdoor display and storage area is in a location between the building and a public street. This is a secondary front yard, but it is considered a front yard for zoning purposes nonetheless. It would extend into the setback area. John, do you want to show the landscape plan, what it looks like today? Or if you could go back to what it looks like today, John? This presently is, there's a continuous landscape belt along Greeley here. And so this proposal is to displace that landscaping and replace it with an outdoor display area. And the other thing is that this would involve, there was a specific limitation in 1994 not having machinery or equipment in an outdoor display area. It would increase the outdoor display area compared to the floor area of the building another 15%. And then the other item is that equipment rental and sales is first allowed in the C5 zoning district and not allowed in the C3 district. So the request before you is to add equipment, sales, and rental to the permissible uses and also to amend the plan to allow this area here to be converted to outdoor display and storage. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this item on March 5, 2013. They did dig into it pretty deeply and had quite a bit of discussion and, and questions and answers with Mr. Waters. We don't have a lot of information for you about the, the details of the store, but the, the store's been rearranged. This loading dock here's been removed. And this area here is, is where customers enter and exit with their rental purchases. So based on the floor plan and other alternatives that were considered, this was really the only location from Mr. Waters' point of view that was a feasible alternative for the outdoor storage area. The other item that was discussed was surfacing. We have commercial areas that have fenced-in storage areas that are asphalt millings or gravel. This site has some of the display areas to the south are a mixture of concrete, also gravel. Planning Commission discussed that, and you have the discretion to require that area to be paved. But the proposal was to have a fenced-in area with a, with a rock surface here and a fence coming out in this area. The other item that the Planning Commission discussed, particularly in light of the fact that there is joining residential to the north, was they looked at fencing and screening. And so the Planning Commission recommended that chain link not be allowed, but that architectural-type fencing be required, which would be similar to the fencing that Earth Care has now surrounding their display areas. It's, and also would be similar to what we have at the water plant along Fifth Street. It would be more of a wrought iron type fence, open, but more ornamental than a chain link design. They also discussed the options for screening. And one option was looked at here is, is to basically have a solid hedge here that would completely obscure that north side adjacent to Greeley. I think, John, do we have a photograph that depicts an existing hedge? This is the, the same variety, which is a variety of yonimus that would grow together and do that. If you could go back to the previous drawing, John? Problem with that particular plan and, and having that there is that basically there's 48 feet or 49 feet between the side of the building and the property line. And the plan is to have about a one-foot area between the fence and the property line. The other item that was discussed was the conversion or potential conversion of Greeley Bridge to a pedestrian bridge and the fact that there is no sidewalks from Ohio over to this location. If you were to put a sidewalk in this location, then the logical place for it would be right here. And having a hedge right directly adjacent to a sidewalk might not be a desirable feature. So the Planning Commission, their recommendation was that the planning staff and city forester work with the Earth Care staff to come up with a planting plan that wouldn't be a solid hedge, but would have some plantings there that could be located between a potential future sidewalk and the curb line that would provide some visual screening, but not a solid screen. So those were the four items that the Planning Commission focused on was, does it need to be in this location? How should it be surfaced? What should the fencing and screening consist of? And it's important to accommodate the extension of a public sidewalk. So that is what led them to their recommendation, which is on page seven of your report. And they voted nine to zero to recommend that the property be rezoned to Plan C5, but that the only C5 use permitted would be the outdoor sales and rental of equipment. And that the display area here be enclosed by an architectural-type fence, that representatives of Waters, Earth Care work with city staff to come up with a landscape buffer along the north side of that. And that basically the original C3 regulations that applied to the original store remain in place. And the reasons they gave for that was to keep this as much C3 as possible to maintain compatibility with the surrounding zoning and uses. There are no residents across the street that directly face this area. They're either on Hazel Court or they're farther to the west. The existing landscaping on the site does far exceed the city's minimum... city's minimum standards already, and has kind of been used as example for other businesses to follow, and either C-three or C-five uses would be consistent with the comprehensive plan designation. So, the ordinance that you have attached is based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. If you don't concur with their action, you have two options. One would be to send this item back to the Planning Commission to reconsider and identify what aspects of their recommendation, or the recommended conditions they have you disagree with. That would take three votes. You could deny this request if you feel like this would not be compatible with the zoning uses of the property to the north, which are zoned residential, and we could certainly rely on the city attorney to help you develop additional findings in support of a motion for denial. I did want to offer a fourth option, and that would be if there are some specific question that you feel needs a direct response from Mr. Waters, or would perhaps a change to the plan that would need his acceptance or non-acceptance, then a fourth option would be to postpone consideration of this to next Monday's meeting, as Mr. Waters can't be physically present here today. We do have Bob Hayworth here representing him, but he can't really make any commitments on Mr. Waters' behalf, and he doesn't have the information about the business that Mr. Waters has. So, that would be a fourth option. But with that, I'd stand for any questions.
What is our, I saw Mr. Kennedy brought up a question about paving versus gravel. C-three and C-five traditionally, if it's added now, have to have paved parking lots for these areas, or?
Yeah, the discussion, or potentially the confusion, this is not part of the parking lot. Any parking lot in any place where customers and employees drive at Waters True Value have to be paved with concrete.
So, a storage area is not required?
A storage area where you don't have customer and employee vehicles driving in and out, and it's just used to store things. It is not a requirement that it be paved, but it's within your authority as part of this planned district to require it to be paved, if you think that is the preferred option.
Wouldn't that heavy equipment just crack and destroy the concrete lot? Our roads where we live are concrete, and I know there are limits on what cars we can drive back there because it takes up the road.
I'm not exactly familiar with how big some of this equipment will be. A lot of it will just be pushed in and out, but the, Mr. Waters expressed a desire to do that. Mr. Hayworth might be able to address that better than myself, since he developed the plan, but the, Mr. Waters thought that paving would be a negative as far as moving things in and out of there.
Okay. Well, and I would think also, not that there would ever be a change of the use. I'm not a construction expert, but I would think removing gravel and putting it back to green space would probably be easier than, maybe, maybe it's not, than breaking up concrete. Since this is kind of an ancillary use, should they decide someday to buy a larger facility for the rental business and get rid of this? I would just think it might be easier to put it back to grass. But again, I, I'm not an expert.
The requirement, and Mr. Hayworth can speak to this also, but the requirement to have an architectural-type fence is going to be more of an investment commitment than having a chain-link fence, certainly.
Yeah, and personally, with the aesthetic area, we've got a lot of paving on all sides around it, so it would almost be nice that it's not paved, and it's got some, a little visual aesthetic appeal, aside from the fencing and landscape in front.
Basically, the way they structured their recommendation was that rather than trying to design the specific buffer
Right.
at the meeting, they wanted to delegate that to staff to work with the Earth Care staff, Mr. Fiorello and company.
And there was also a discussion in there on the sidewalk, and the sidewalk preferential side being the south side, and all of that would still work within the plan that they've proposed to the commission?
Yes, we would ensure that nothing that was done in this plan would be an obstacle to having a property-lined sidewalk there.
Okay.
And the ideal situation would be to have sidewalks on both sides of Greeley, but we need one to start.
Yep.
And Mr. Stack is working on that project, so if you have specific questions about that, I'll defer that to him.
Any questions, Staff? Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do we have any public comment?
My name is Bob Hayworth, and with owner of Lee Hayworth Construction, three forty-eight East Avenue A. And Mr. Waters, again, apologizes for not being able to be here, but he had a very, for the last month, he'd planned on this trip, you know, that he's on, so he's not able to make it here today. I'm here for basically answering any questions, but the main thing that, some of the things that you read here on even locating this to this general location is, what they're trying to do is, again, establish a very nice, clean-looking place. If you look at the rest of the site there, all the sites on what Waters has done is looked very, very nice. They're trying to keep the public more as they're entering the new rental area. It's towards the northwest corner of the business. They're going to try to keep the back area of the business mainly for warehouse, fenced-off area that's protected. Even while I was under construction there, doing the remodeling in some of the warehouse area in the back, I saw a person pull up with a large vehicle, load up the vehicle, and my employees did, and we found out later they had no permission to be there, and they were stealing all the stuff in the middle of the day. So, the main thing is to try to get higher security to where that back area stays fenced off. There is a separate fenced-off, lock-gated area for the general public, for the rental, large rental items, and everything with the items that they're renting within the business themselves. They have a nice entrance door with signage on that northwest corner to go in there. Everything's in one secluded area. It's secure. The rental staff could go out, take, get the large equipment, things like that. With the rock, with a lot of Bobcat-type machines, backhoes, things like that, with the tires they have, it's a lot better to have the rock with those tires. It lasts a lot better versus having asphalt or concrete. So, that was the reasoning for that. The architectural fence would be a very good blend with what is located over there towards the south side of the property now. It's won't be the same. It's not made the same. It's made considerably better now. That lasts a lot better. In fact, Mr. Waters is planning on replacing some of the fencing that is in bad shape there towards the south side of the property also, for the good blend of the area. So, I know Mr. Waters and I are very willing to work with Dean on some of the landscaping area of the whole facility. The entrance area, one thing he didn't mention, the entrance area would be, from when you're looking at that picture, more towards the west, next to the building. So, it's away from everything, again, hopefully, to a more secure area for Waters. And the architectural fence, obviously, will give, hopefully, a fairly secure access to that equipment. I'd address any questions that you might have of me.
Any questions?
No, just curious. Do you feel like your experience, everybody always tells us how great it was working with city staff. Do you feel the same, that it was an easy process?
It was very well. Dean worked exceptionally well with us, and I'm not just saying that.
No.
Mr. Waters.
That's why we ask now, so you'll only say good things.
When Mr. Waters and I went into the room and talked about this proposal at the beginning, it all kind of came and addressed when I came into the office a few weeks prior and said, you know, do you need a fence permit in Salina to go put commercially? He says, well, you don't necessarily need a fence permit. Several people said. I said, you know, I really think we need to talk about this, because I'm not for sure if all of this could be allowed, what we're trying to do. And then Dean talked to me for a while and said, why don't we just have a meeting on this? We sat down in the meeting, and we got everything, just the whole process started. And then Dean actually worked out a proposal for Mr. Waters and I to look at before the Planning Commission meeting on how, what we thought about, what we talked about. And it was sometimes what you think you talk about, what's in writing, might be two different things.
Different things, sure.
You know, so it all worked out very well.
Good. Well, we like to hear that.
Mr. Waters has a beautiful facility there, and I miss a lot.
Really does.
It's very, very nice.
Good. Well, he's really anxious to start this new process of larger machinery. He is doing this in other communities in the state, and it's worked very well for him, so.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for any discussion and action. It is a quasi-judicial matter, so if there's any deliberation required, you have that ability to request as well.
Mayor, I would just move that the commission make the same factual findings as are made by the Planning Commission and adopt ordinance thirteen, one, zero, six, eight, six.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number thirteen dash ten, bless you, six, eight, six, based on concurring with the same facts and findings of the Planning Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried five, zero. We have no other development business, so that moves us into administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number thirteen, ten thousand six hundred and eighty-two, authorizing the city manager to place traffic control devices and regulate traffic.
This ordinance number thirteen dash ten, six, eight, two, was passed on first reading, March the fourth, and since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have any questions from the commission or public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number thirteen dash one, zero, six, eight, two.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number thirteen dash ten, six, eight, two, on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. That motion carried five, zero.
Item eight point two, resolution number thirteen, sixty-nine, ninety-two, adopting the two thousand thirteen municipal water conservation plan for the city of Salina. Sub item eight point two A, first reading ordinance number thirteen, ten thousand six hundred and eighty-four, amending chapter forty-one, article two, division three, sections forty-one, sixty-one, forty-one, sixty-one point one, and forty-one, sixty-two of the Salina code pertaining to water conservation.
Ms. Tesker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The current municipal water conservation plan was completed in nineteen ninety-seven in accordance with the municipal water conservation guidelines published by the Kansas Water Office in November of nineteen ninety. The primary objectives of the plan were to develop long-term water conservation goals, which were covered in the section titled Long-Term Water Use Efficiency and Short-Term Water Emergency Plans, which were covered in the section titled Drought Emergency Response. The plan was required as a part of the state revolving loan fund program when the city utilized those funds for improvements at the water treatment plant. The nineteen ninety-seven plan addresses short-term water shortage problems through identification of a series of stages, with the first being a water watch, which had voluntary reductions of water use, the second, a water warning, which had water use restrictions, and the third, a water emergency, which had prohibition of water uses. An important facet of a water conservation plan is the efficient use of the water, which conserves the limited water resources available to Salina, and also has a beneficial effect of postponing costly water system expansions. During the drought emergency of two thousand and six, the city found it difficult to implement the nineteen ninety-seven plan, it was, as it was written. Some of the problems that we dealt with were, there was really no differentiation between winter and summer conditions in the stream, and typically, in the summer, we utilize nine to ten million gallons of water, and in the winter, four and a half to five million gallons a day. So, it wasn't necessary to have the same volume or flow in the river. The third issue was, we found it difficult to move in and out of the different stages, particularly when it pertained to the river flows. The river flows bounce up and down on a daily basis, which would force us to bounce in and out of different stages of the plan, and that just didn't make sense to do that. The third was, we didn't really agree with the data analysis required for the groundwater triggers. In the existing plan, it was based on a five-year seasonal average, so if you were in a long-term drought, that groundwater level just kept dropping lower and lower and lower, and as an end result, it didn't protect our well pumps, which we found to be a problem a few years after that in replacing the pump motors. The Kansas Water Office updated the nineteen ninety guidelines and published the two thousand and seven municipal water conservation plan guidelines, and these guidelines allowed private domestic wells within the city limits to be included in the drought emergency response if it was approved by the chief engineer of the Division of Water Resources, specifically for water warnings and water emergencies. And to, I'm going to refer to the definitions in the Division Three Water Conservation Program, so we understand what domestic well users are. Basically, domestic uses, as the term is used in this division, shall mean the use of water by any person, or by a family unit or household, for household purposes, or for the watering of livestock, poultry farm, and domestic animals used in operating a farm, and for the irrigation of lands, not exceeding a total of two acres in area for the growing of gardens, orchards, and lawns. And what's important there is not exceeding the two acres. And then also, the definition of any person. A person, as the term is used in this division, shall mean and include a natural person, a partnership, an organization, a corporation, a municipality, and any agency of the state or federal government. So, that pretty well rolls all of the different agencies in. It's not just a person or residential home. And then, private domestic well water, as the term in this division, shall mean groundwater utilized for domestic uses. The proposed two thousand thirteen plan incorporated the two thousand and seven municipal conservation plan guidelines and some solutions to correct the problems that we felt existed with the existing plan. There are three notable revision components in the proposed two thousand and thirteen plan. The first component is water use efficiency, and water use efficiency is measured in gallons per capita or per person per day. And each year, the Kansas Water Office, in cooperation with the Division of Water Resources, produces a report that indicates the per capita use for all of the water suppliers through Kansas. Salina is included as a large supplier, which means we have a population of over ten thousand, and we fall in Region Seven, which is a band that runs from the Nebraska Line, and on the west, it's the west edge of Celine County, and then south to Oklahoma, and on the east, Shawnee County. So, we're included with McPherson, Wichita, Hayesville, Manhattan, Hutchinson, and those type of communities. And the most latest report that's published is two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, the city used one hundred and twenty gallons per day per capita, and the other similar-sized communities averaged one hundred and thirty-four gallons per day. Over a five-year period of two thousand and six through two thousand and ten, the city averaged one hundred and sixteen gallons per day, while the others' communities averaged one hundred and thirty-four gallons per day. The nineteen ninety-seven plan included a water conservation goal not to exceed one hundred and forty gallons per day, and in the two thousand and thirteen plan, the goal is one hundred and twenty-one gallons per day. The second component is regulation of private domestic wells. The drought emergency response would apply to private domestic wells within the city limits when it's authorized by the chief engineer of DWR under water warnings and emergency. The chief engineer has the authority to require owners of a water right for a private domestic well to adopt and implement conservation plans and practices that would be compliant with the city's water conservation plan. Basically, there's three conditions that apply for these measures. The first condition is when impairment to senior water rights is occurring, when a municipality with a common source of supplies experiences a drought, water watches, warnings, or emergencies are in place, or when waste of water is occurring. And conditions two and three are applicable for our plan. Watering during the hours when high evaporation, low humidity, and high winds occur is considered waste of water, because these times, the water applied has a higher percentage of loss than it is actually put to beneficial use. On the basis of waste of water, outdoor watering during the hours of ten AM to six PM, between June first through September thirtieth of each year, for all city customers and private domestic well owners within the city limits would be prohibited. The third component is the drought emergency response, which includes three stages, a watch, warning, and emergency. And for each stage, there are trigger points which apply to the treatment operations, river flows, and groundwater levels. When we look at the river flows in the proposed plan, they've been broken into summer time, which is May through September, and winter, which is October through April. which is May through September, and winter, which is October through April. The groundwater levels are set at a static depth so as to protect our wells. And one item that came up while we've had this out, notice to the public about the plan, is a citizen had suggested that we define under a water warning, which would be on page nine of the plan, under Regulation Actions, item one, that we give specific days for when they could water. For example, odd numbers would water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and evens would water on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. This allows the individuals to set their timers on the irrigation systems and not be adjusting it on a weekly basis. That was a good suggestion, and we've added that into the plan. And then I'd also like to reference page twelve of the plan. I would like to say that staff has considered all the possible issues and concerns that would come up, and this plan is flawless, but we realize there's going to be a pretty large learning curve for the citizens and for staff, so we will be reviewing the plan on a yearly basis to make revisions that are necessary to move forward. And the proposed city code amendments are attached in Appendix A of the municipal water conservation plan. They were highlighted in red. I read the definitions from there, and basically, these amendments bring the private domestic well owners to following the same rules and regulations as the city customers. Once the two thousand and thirteen plan is adopted and the ordinance is passed, we have three additional steps to complete the process. The first step is we'll submit the plan and the ordinance to the Kansas Water Office and DWR for final approval. We have preliminary approval from them for our plan as it stands, so should be no issues, but we have that step. Once we receive that final approval, the third step would be for the city manager to submit a letter to the chief engineer of DWR requesting delegation of authority under KSA eighty-two A seven thirty-three I to implement the plan. There are no physical impacts to the two thousand and thirteen budget. For years twenty fourteen and on, we estimate the budget requirements of three thousand dollars for outreach and public education, and roughly seventeen thousand for whatever rebate programs we might move forward with. There's no additional dollars for staffing. Staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration, and it will require two separate motions. The first item is resolution number thirteen dash six sixty-nine ninety-two. It's the adoption of the two thousand and thirteen municipal water conservation plan for the city of Salina. The three options are, first option is adopt the attached resolution number thirteen dash sixty-nine ninety-two as drafted. The second option is to amend provisions of resolution number thirteen six ninety-two as the city commission finds appropriate. Our third option is deny approval of resolution number thirteen dash sixty-nine ninety-two. Item B is ordinance number thirteen dash ten six eighty-four, and it's amending the Salina Code pertaining to the water conservation. Three options again. First option, pass attached ordinance number thirteen dash ten six eighty-four on first reading as drafted. Amend provisions to ordinance number thirteen dash ten six eighty-four as city commission finds appropriate and pass on first reading. Third option is deny approval of ordinance number thirteen dash ten six eighty-four. Staff recommends option one for both items A and B, and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have about the municipal water conservation plan or the city code amendments.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Ms. Tasker. Do we have any public comment on this item? Come forward, please state your name and your address.
Mayor Jenkins, Commissioners, my name is Dan Audi. I'm the owner-operator of Professional Sprinkler Installation located at one forty-six South Third, and I have a residence here in town as well. I spoke to you briefly during the study session here a week or so ago, brought up a couple of questions that I would like to, as a citizen, have answered. One of the questions I brought up was based upon the allocation of the city's available water through DWR. As it sits right now, the city of Salina has allocated ten million gallons per day for groundwater use, okay, or groundwater consumption, I guess. I would like to know from city staff or from you how shutting off any wells is going to increase that value. You guys are only, we are, as a citizen, as a city of Salina, only allowed to pump ten million gallons per day out of the ground. So that's one question that I'd like to have someone address, or at least have you guys think about before you pass this ordinance. What I wanted to talk about here briefly today is just the sheer mathematics of what's being proposed as far as the wells are concerned. I'm going to lay out some numbers here. If you guys, you know, have any questions about these numbers, feel free to ask me or dispute them, or if city staff wants to comment. Does anyone know how many gallons are in a cubic foot of water?
Seven point eight four five.
Seven point four eight.
Four eight five.
Yeah, seven point four eight.
That's why he's the mayor!
That's why he's the mayor, exactly. So, very good. So, basically, what it amounts to is a cubic foot of water is twelve by twelve by twelve, you know, just a cubic foot, okay? In an acre, okay, there are forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty feet, square feet. So if we had them one foot deep, that'd be forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty cubic feet of water. So you can picture an acre covered one foot deep in water, okay? Gallons in that acre would be three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight gallons, and some change, okay? If we were to take acres in a square mile, there's six hundred and forty acres in a square mile, okay? What that brings you to is basically two million gallons, okay? There are essentially twenty square miles of alluvial aquifer underneath the city of Salina. So, one foot deep, that brings you to one point four billion gallons in one foot of alluvial aquifer underneath the city of Salina, okay? So, that sounds like a lot of water, but maybe it's not. I don't know how fast we're pumping it out. But let's look at it here. We've got twenty, or, excuse me, two thousand wells inside the city of Salina, private-use wells, as the city staff claims. That number was actually only fifteen hundred and forty-seven in two thousand and nine, but we'll go ahead and say that, you know, there's been another four hundred and fifty wells put in the last three, four years, okay? So we'll use that two thousand number. If the average discharge of those wells was twenty-five gallons per minute, that number would turn out to fifty thousand gallons per minute, okay? Is how fast, if they were all turned on at the same time, how fast they would be pumping water out, at twenty-five gallons per minute per well, times two thousand wells, okay? What that's going to basically equate to is that if we were to turn all the wells on twenty-four seven, okay, starting right now, okay? That brings us to eighty-three thousand four hundred and twelve minutes, or thirteen hundred and ninety hours, or fifty-seven point nine days in order to remove one foot of liquid from an area the size of Salina, okay? So, to say that shutting off these wells, especially in the fact that, you know, part of your statement here, as far as what was done for the city here, I was going to read by Wilson and Company, part of the actual statement in the importance of water conservation says, "Like many other public water suppliers, the city of Salina is looking to water conservation as a viable long-term supply option, helping to avert water and wastewater system expansions," okay, "which resolve a significant saving in capital and operating costs." You know, to me, I mean, this product, this has been looked at completely backwards. You know, if these pumps were not pumping for water usage, our per capita, they're thirteen percent below the average, I mean, we're thirteen percent below the area average, our per capita would be up there at the area average, or possibly even above. You know, these well owners, these private well owners are providing an actual service to the city of Salina, because we haven't had to increase our infrastructure. We haven't had to to increase our allocation. Now, that stuff can all come on down the line as we get in, you know, as we did in the raw water study, you know, get the South Well Fields online, you know, get the water treatment plant built, you know, we'll have plenty to go around as far as that goes for quite a few years to come, according to what the raw water study said. But as it sits right now, you know, I can see absolutely no benefit whatsoever in including these wells, you know, with the actual city water restrictions. The other thing that I would mention to you is that many of the triggers that bring us into watch, warning, and emergency, you know, they don't even relate to really, to wells. I mean, I don't see how they do. You know, when the water treatment plant's at seventy-five percent capacity, that allows us to go into a water watch, okay, which would in turn affect private citizens' wells now at this point, okay? How does, I don't understand where the correlation for that is, you know? If we were to have emergency conditions related to repairs of our water quality, that's going to, in fact, you know, infringe upon the well owners. And I completely concur with Ms. Tasker, you know, it's good to have good conservation of water during the middle of the day. You're going to lose massive amounts of water to evaporation, you know? I'm somebody who's in the field of, you know, of water conservation, I've been doing this for a long time. You're going to have those kind of issues, and I think that anything we can do to conserve water is probably, you know, a good thing a lot of times. But what we've got here is we've got trigger levels that are, you know, basically unassociated with what we're trying to control, you know? And that right there brings some concern, because if it was just stopping, you know, hey, we're not going to water during the day, if it stopped right there, that'd be one thing. But that's not what this ordinance says. This ordinance says, is that we're going to treat the wells like we're going to treat the domestic water source. And that's something that's, that basically, in my book, you know, is not the same thing. You know, DWR doesn't treat groundwater the same as the river water, so why are we hinging our river water, our allocation of river water, making someone else shut their private well source off? I don't understand. If DWR doesn't consider in the same thing, why is the city of Salina, in this ordinance, considering the same thing? So, you know, I've got, if you pass it on the first reading, you know, that's not going to give you a lot of time to look at this, look at these numbers that I've got, but I've got these numbers if you guys would like to look at them, and if you can find an error in my math, why, I'd be happy to apologize here publicly, but I did it on Excel spreadsheets, so I'm pretty sure that it's correct, so.
Ms. Tasker, is there any information, any data that he shared that you would like a chance to elaborate on, or the trigger points, or anything that you just kind of want clarified?
I think his math is correct. When we look at the water usage, we are, we can pump ten million gallons a day, but honestly, we can't do that day in and day out, because with our water rights, we have that volume capacity or rate capacity of ten million gallons a day, but we also have a volume that pertains to so many acre-feet of water. And at ten million gallons a day, the acre-feet are gone long before three hundred and sixty-five days have expired, so our water rights have two components. And when we look at DWR, basically, it's their rules and regulations that really came forth in the two thousand and seven plan, where they wanted to bring private domestic wells in line with other users in the city during a water warning or a water emergency. So that's basically their plan that they developed and brought forward for us to utilize. So, in their minds, they do see some relationship between the groundwater and the surface water. And when we look at USGS did the water model from Canoplis Lake to on past Salina, they were not able to get their model to calibrate in the area of Salina, and what they determined was the domestic well users. And they made some calculations similar to what Dan did. In the big scheme of things, there's, the city of Salina uses currently about three thousand acre-feet of water from the surface supply, and about the same from groundwater. We use about fifty percent from each. And when we looked at the groundwater, we were using three thousand acre-feet. There was an additional thousand acre-feet being utilized, in their opinion, by the domestic well user. So, when we look at the long-term graphing of our groundwater supplies, you see that they do drop off during drought periods, and especially extended droughts, which we looked at a couple of weeks ago at the study session. So, I think they do apply together, but I wanted to make that relationship about the ten million gallons, that it's not day in and day out that we can do that.
I guess my thoughts are, and maybe Dan can come back and talk to this, and I may be missing the argument here, is the argument that because we've got the water, we should waste it? Because that's what I'm getting from this, is, hey, these guys have wells, they shouldn't fall into the same rules that the city, people using city waters. I mean, am I missing the point here? But that seems to me the argument, is we've got all this water, we've got to use it, they should be able to run their wells, and maybe, and maybe that's not what Dan's saying, but that's the only thing I glean from arguing for these well owners. I don't see a problem with requiring them to be under the same sort of regulations that are normal citizens, because they went out and spent a couple thousand dollars and dug down to water that belongs to all of us. They shouldn't have any more right to waste it. And I understand what he's saying, he's okay with it being regulated between ten and six, and he's talked to me about conservation before, and I know it is a concern, but I don't see that that burden should drop off from them, if we have to stop, you know, using water for other things because of these triggers, regardless of what the trigger points are. I'm assuming that you have trigger points there with some intelligence behind why those trigger points are there, way more than I can understand, but it just seems to me that any argument just seems to be sort of mute unless I'm missing the point here. I mean, and again, I encourage Dan to come up and clarify for me, but I just, am I missing something here?
Well, I think Dan did mention that he didn't, he agreed it wasn't appropriate to water during the heat of the day, so maybe the water use regulation from ten to six, June first through September thirtieth, if I thought I heard him right, he agreed with that. So then, what's left is we're talking about during times when we're in a water warning or a water emergency, because that does not apply when we're in a water watch, which we're currently in, so, in those times of different drought conditions.
But the water, the water watch talks about when the treatment plant operations are at seventy-five, and that's what he referred to, he referred to the seventy-five percent number, and I thought I remembered it right, that that's just declaring a watch.
And that's one of the trigger points, is treatment operations. If for some reason we were at seventy-five percent of capacity, typically, we, I think our largest day has been fourteen million gallons a day back in two thousand and two, so we're along, we have quite a distance before we get close to water treatment being an issue for us. The most common issue is the flows in the Smoky Hill River.
So there's three, kind of three categories, the river, the treatment, the groundwater, and it's when any one of the three triggers are flipped, that's when you go into the watch.
With the exception of when you look at the groundwater levels, it's when groundwater is our only source that those levels pertain. Sorry.
But the, I guess the confusion was, and maybe Dan needs to clarify, but he mentioned seventy-five percent, and at that, that's a treatment plant number, and then that's when the burden, and that's not the word that he used, he used a different word, is going to apply to the private well owners, and I didn't see any burden on anybody in a watch consideration.
That's correct, in a watch.
Okay, so that's what my confusion was, because that seemed like stage one tripping, albeit I heard the question of, why is it tied to the plant? The rest of the statement seemed to indicate to me that then the well, the private wells were going to be shut off at that point in time, which is drastically different than what we're doing for the private users. It's just a watch period then.
That's correct. The watch has basically voluntary reductions, there's no water use restrictions with it.
Okay. And then stage two, is the plant at ninety percent three consecutive days, or the groundwater, or the river? And then what are the actions that take place then for private and public users?
In a water.
So that would be the stage, the stage two, the warning?
Which is a water warning. Then we would have the restrictions, and when we look at those, probably the biggest restriction that's notable is the lawn watering, and then it would be restricted to three days a week.
Okay. Okay. And then we get into the emergency past that. And then we get into the emergency past that.
And the emergency, and, and as we looked at our trigger points in the river, we lowered those considerably from what you saw in the nineteen ninety-seven plan, and those are based on what we saw this previous year when we were actually in a drought condition, and they were limiting the volume of water released from Canoplas Lake, so the flows in the river were much lower. And we looked at those as to the, in comparison to the volume of water we needed from the river to meet our demands. And so, I think we've lowered those numbers to where we'll have to look at those and see if that makes sense in a year, but they seemed to make sense last year. And as our demands go up, we'll have to take a look at what we're doing.
Okay. Any other questions, the staff?
So if we implement this, is that the first step on becoming something like Ellis, Kansas has implemented recently?
They're in the process of-
Is that something in the near future we're looking at?
Once this plan is implemented, then the private domestic wells would fall under the same restrictions or prohibition as our city customers. And I know Ellis is, currently has a plan that they're looking at, and I think they've submitted it to DWR, where we're not sure whether theirs will be first or the city of Salinas, because they haven't, we've done a preliminary review and they haven't, but I think our plans are similar. Haven't seen it, but from what I understand, we're very similar to Ellis.
So without this, when we hit a water warning, okay? Yeah, I know, which one of the, we hit a water warning, I don't have a private well, and that means that I'm going to be able to water my lawn three days, three days a week.
Yes. And not during the day.
And not during the day.
Between June and September thirty.
But somebody across the street that has a private well can just turn on their sprinkler at any time.
That's correct.
Any day, anytime.
Any day, anytime, in any one of the three stages, the watch, the warning, or the emergency.
That's correct.
And when we talk about the wells, then when we hit that water warning, then they'd have the same requirement. They couldn't water during the day, and they'd have to go three days a week.
That's correct.
Okay.
In a water warning.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
No, just might bring Dan up, just to clarify if we could, just, because I don't wanna miss, miss, misquote him or misread him, because I know you've mentioned other conservation ideas that you have, like the, the rain sensors, and so I know, I know you're concerned about it, I don't wanna mislead the public that you're not, because I know it is a concern to you.
Absolutely, and I was pleased to see that, that rain sensors are actually, for twenty fourteen, are actually in part of the conservation plan, so that's, that's nice to see. I apologize, I, I was just using that as an example on the water watch, meaning the fact that, that things that trigger levels that really don't pertain to groundwater, such as the water treatment plant, at either the watch, warning, or emergency stage, are going to affect the actual wells, whether they, whether or not they actually are going to be restricted as well. And that's, so it was anecdotal, I guess is what I'm saying, I didn't mean to specifically say there would be any thing other than voluntary at the, at the watch level, but at the warning and the emergency level, it would not, it would be mandatory restrictions if in fact the, the water treatment plant did read it, reach its, its trigger point criteria. You know, some of the other things that are, that are actually in this, that, that I would bring up here as far as the stage, we just, you know, we just deal strictly with stage two warnings, you know? On the stage two warning, when the Smoky Hill River level is below twenty cubic feet per second at the Menter gauge, that is going to trigger a warning that will in turn affect the groundwater, private well usage, you know? So when the river at Menter is not flowing at high enough levels, that's gonna require the groundwater usage, people who've invested in their properties, to adhere to this, to the schedule. So that's something that, you know, I'm, I'm totally not against some type of criteria that would, that would possibly, you know, bring into line water conservation measures. However, with this here, lumping those two together, it's just not, it's just, it's just apples and oranges in my, in my books, you know? I mean, as far as, you know, emergency conditions related to repairs and water quality, I don't see how that could pertain in any fashion to, to restricting wells. However, the criteria is here to restrict wells under, under that, you know? So that's something that, the, the last thing I would maybe mention is, is we, we talk about the, we talk about the twenty cubic feet per second, the Menter gauge, and we talk about, you know, twenty-eight feet, thirty-foot and well, well, monitoring wells fall below a saturated aquiferic thickness of thirty feet. You know, has there been any type of spreadsheet that you as a commission have got that would, that would take these standards and apply those over the last forty years, just to see? I mean, for all, I mean, for all we know, that if we, if we had something with this criteria on it, you know, we might've been in water emergency for the last, you know, five years, I don't know.
Yeah, that last meeting, I think we, we got the printout.
You guys have that? So, so how, as far as this goes here, I mean, just a general question as a citizen, how, how often, if we applied today's criteria over the last, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years, how often would we have been in water emergency?
And we'll have, we'll have Ms. Tasker go ahead and, and state those things.
Yeah.
But are, are there other things that you would like to?
That's, that's pretty much it. I just, I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted you guys to realize how much water we're talking about, and I think, I think in this particular case, it has a lot to do with the haves and the have-nots, because somebody, you know, doesn't have the ability because of either their location, or because of their, their decisions they've made on their property, to be able to pump that water from the ground, and they decided to, you know, go ahead and, and hook up an irrigation system to the domestic water source, you know, that's some, that's gonna come with the certain inherent pitfalls. No different than someone who, who, you know, goes ahead and invests their property and puts forth a well out there, they've got certain expenses that are going to be incurred with that as well. It's just a different type of, of, of decision-making processes, whether or not you're going to invest in your property one way or invest in another. But to have these trigger levels that, that really a lot of them don't pertain to actual groundwater, you know, be applied, you know, so that, so that people have made this substantial, I mean, you think about it like this, a, a well, a couple thousand dollars to put a well in, you guys say there's two thousand of them in the city? You know, there's been a lot of public, you know, money, there are private money that's put forth by our public, you know, to invest in their properties, all of which, every single bit of which, is taking and alleviating a burden from the city's domestic source, because if they hadn't hooked up, there's a good chance they would be running irrigation systems hooked to, to, to the city sources, you know? All that needs to be taken into account. Now here after the fact, after they've already made this investment, you know, now we're gonna come in and say, oh, you know, wait a minute, guys, you can't, you can't use that the way you intended to use it, you know? So, just something for you guys to think about.
Dan, real quick, I wanna, I wanna make, I wanna kinda change the characterization of your question, just to make sure if I'm understanding it right. I think what you're saying is, is you're saying that you believe that at least a significant majority of the time, maybe all the time, the, the water, you know, watch, warning, emergencies will all be triggered by the river, and wouldn't be triggered by the groundwater levels before the river already gets you there? And therefore, the river's already gonna, gonna get us into that, and then it would affect the private well owner, even if we haven't gotten to the point of worrying about the water levels, the groundwater levels? So always the river, that we wouldn't independently trigger these by groundwater levels, is that kinda the scenario you're looking at?
The river is a substantial part of that, because, because if you look at the, the information we got from the raw water study, the actual river was a lot more volatile than the groundwater, and that's just due to the very hydraulic nature of the alluvial ocre, you know? The, the groundwater reacts at a much more, a, a much slower rate than the river does, you know, because it's not, it's not as directly dependent on the releases, you know, from Canoplas. You know, somebody goes and releases the floodgate, you know, forty-two to seventy, or forty-eight to seventy-two hours later, we've got more or less water in the river channel. That doesn't immediately transfer to the, to the actual alluvial. And that was proven in the fact that we had, when we had the hydrologists come through, one of the actual things that they talked about for recharging, as just a trial blend, for recharging the alluvial ocre in proximity of the actual wells in Oakdale Park was to, was to open up the channel running through Oakdale Park. And that was just kind of, you know, thrown away, because the fact is, is that the alluvial ocre is so permeable that that doesn't do any good. It's, it's a short-lived gain. You can put all this water through the channel, recharge it, and it's just out of there just like that, because it, it is trans, it is transitory, I guess, is that the right word? Transitions, okay? It moves from point A to B, so it doesn't actually stay there, it's, it, you know? So, you know, that is a concern of mine, you know, that that is, that, that the, the volatility of the, of the river would impact adversely people with private wells.
So you'd like to see if the well owners are going to be restricted to relate that, probably strictly with the groundwater level triggers versus the river triggers?
I think that would be, I think that would be a definite plus, you know? Now whether or not the groundwater triggers are, are going to be appropriate, that's a different matter, and that's why I brought up the question, how long, you know, how long would we have been in watch, warning, emergency, had we applied today's proposed criteria to the, to the past, you know? And that'd be some information that I'd, I'd like to see on a spreadsheet, if that's possible.
Ms. Tasker, why don't you come back up, and I'm gonna ask you a question before you go into it, and I know I've asked you it before, but this is my context for the whole discussion. Have we ever been in an emergency condition?
We were in an emergency in July of two thousand and six, when the river was basically dry.
Okay, how many, and we, we kinda, in our heads, calculated all the volume of the water underneath, and that would kinda make me feel like there's somewhat of a limitless resource down below, under our conditions at that point in time, without any improvement on the river water flow, and continuing to pump groundwater at that rate, how close were we to running out of water?
Back in oh-six, the groundwater levels at that time were down around bouncing, they kinda changed over the year, but they, in that portion of the year, they were down around twenty-six and a half feet. And we have asked that question of HDR, who worked on our groundwater supply, if we had absolutely no flow in the river, how long would our groundwater supply stay viable? And, you know, how they can calculate that, I'm not sure, but they did, and they said we'd be in the three to six months range if we had absolutely no river water. And that depends upon, and that was starting with the groundwater levels at a higher elevation, which we are today, we're currently at about thirty-four and a half feet. So, what we see over the years is the groundwater level does drop, and it looks like about every ten years, it kinda follows this curve up and down, so it depends upon the number of years you are in, the drought, as to how reliable our groundwater source is. So we look at trying to deal with the demand to kind of, to extend the life of that groundwater supply in any way that we can. That's, that's what our goals are, because it is not an infinite supply, it does drop down, and if it gets so low, then we have difficulty pulling any capacity out, because it falls real low in the screens of our wells, and the efficiency, and what we can pull from each well is reduced greatly.
Yeah, and I, I've, I've been there before, you can, Laura, you're pumping so far, and you're not really pumping water out.
Pump a lot of air, creates a lot of problems.
So go ahead with those, with the triggers, if you have some of those.
Well, I'll, I'll try to, it's kind of hard to look at, since I have the sheet of paper and you don't. But we, when we did the presentation, we looked at our current numbers in the river and our current proposed numbers in the wells. And when we looked at two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve for the Smoky Hill River, during the, I would say, the winter, from about October through early part of two thousand and twelve, we would have been in a watch, based on river flows, which means we would have been below twenty CFS some. The only issue is we put the duration at times in there for the five days, so without calculating that, some of that smoothes out, so we wouldn't have been in a watch for a very long duration. But when we do look at the summer of two thousand and twelve, in July and August, when the irrigators were using a lot of water, and we were working with them to try to, they were releasing only what we needed from Canoplas Lake, and the irrigators were trying to use the appropriate volume of water, turning themselves on and off to maintain twenty at the Menter gauge, there's a few times that they dropped down below the twenty. And so we would have been in a, a watch, or possibly in an emergency, but I don't think we had enough days to trigger that. But typically, if they would do what their mission is and stay above twenty, we would have been a watch, but we would have not dropped into a warning this last summer. And so, that kinda gives you an idea for last year, based on these new trigger points, they're much lower. And then when we look back at two thousand and five and two thousand and, through two thousand and seven, basically, the summer of two thousand and six, we fell pretty much what we did back then anyhow, we were in a, a watch, a warning, and then an emergency for about a week, and then back into a warning from that point on, so. And then the rest of the time, we would, we were not in really any issues with these new proposed trigger points.
Okay.
And then when we looked at groundwater, based on these proposed depths of water in the well, in January of two thousand and eleven through twelve, in August of two thousand and twelve, we got down fairly close to where we, it would have hit into a watch, but basically, the points were above that. And when we look back in two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, we would have fell into an emergency in the summer of two thousand and six, based on our groundwater levels. But I would say that I think we have made some changes in how we operate our wellfield. We try to operate spread out across the wellfield as opposed to certain wells close to Oakdale. We have some limitations, because we are required to pump certain wells for the contamination from the VOCs, underground storage tanks, but we've made some improvements in how we pump, and we think we've improved that, to where we don't draw it down in the center of our wellfield.
And what would it mean if the triggering for these private wells was sheerly on that groundwater, versus percentage capacity of the treatment plant and river flow, and it was only on the groundwater?
I've got to think about that some, I-
Martha, can I, I wanna re-characterize it, because I'm, that's a very good question. Can you contemplate, given that the groundwater triggers indicate when groundwater is the only source, can you contemplate a situation in which the groundwater levels would put us into a warning or emergency that we weren't already in because of the river flows? I think that was somewhat what, what Dan was alluding to.
In two thousand and six, we would have fell in that category, because the groundwater levels, we'd been in an extended drought. Over an extended drought period, the groundwater levels continued to drop, and we fall into those, kind of the lulls or the lows. So I think there is a potential that you would have both conditions. We would have been oh-six.
Do you think now with the, the, kinda the flow plan from the reservoir into the river, that the state is contemplating and actually even used last year, that the river flows would, in essence, come back prior to the well levels coming back and, and provide any relief? Or would you, in essence, would, if we, if we had the same scenario in the future, would you see the river flow levels even less in the future than we did back in two thousand and six because of the river flow, flow plan?
Yes, there was, the river flows were less, which, when the flows are less, then obviously, and the duration of the drought, we have less groundwater recharge, so the groundwater levels continue to drop. So they, truly, they do have a relationship with each other.
So I think I understand what, what Dan's saying, because it looks like, in most of the scenarios, you're gonna, you're probably going to see an emergency, or, I'm sorry, warning or an emergency, which are the two that impact things, triggered by the river, until we're out of water at the river, and then one could argue that, possibly, that the groundwater triggers are somewhat irrelevant, because we're out, the river's already got us there. But I would liken that, kinda going back to the two glasses, you have, I had my river glass, which is full, and I had my groundwater glass, which is full, and I wanna use up all I can in my river glass first, that's, that's what we wanna do. We know we're gonna have to use some in our groundwater glass still, but, but, you know, but we expect at the end of the day, the groundwater glass, say, has three-fourths left in it, so then if I have to go to it, I have three-fourths of a glass. But if there's a small leak throughout the day, fifteen, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, I may not have seventy-five percent of that glass left, I may only have half of that glass or less. And I think that's part of the, part of the point is, is that even if there may not be a direct relationship between the, the river and the groundwater wells today, that if we have a leak out of our groundwater, which would mean the well users slowly pulling a little bit of capacity, not, I can't argue exactly how much, but slowly pulling what I think would be enough that DWR agrees with us, that we would want to slow that down if we could, prior to running out of river water.
Right.
I think that's the point, is-
Yeah, and that goes back to my whole point, is it-
Yeah, and that goes back to my whole point, is it doesn't matter where the water's coming from, if it's low here, it doesn't mean we have a right to just go waste this other water. Uh, you know, I mean, if that makes, I mean, I think it's exactly what you're saying, is just because it's there, it doesn't mean that there should, still shouldn't be requirements on it. Even though we're using the river as the trigger, and it may not directly affect us, it's still showing us, hey, water's beginning to disappear, for whatever reason, if the river's not charging, we can assume the groundwater's probably not charging as well, because it means it probably has, there's either drought conditions or, or whatever the case, and if we've got these well users using it, that's part, they're, they're not pulling from the river, they're pulling from the, this aquifer. Uh, the, the two questions I had, too, as we get lower on using our wells, does that increase maintenance cost on the way we pump water? Again, these may be seem extremely remedial, but I don't, I don't know how our system works. Is there an increased cost in maintenance and, to the taxpayers, as we get down lower in our wells?
In, in the event that the groundwater levels were low like they were in oh-six, we actually pull, the water's below the top of our screens, which has perforations in it, so then it pulls air, and that air creates cavitation in the pumps, and then usually creates a sixty thousand dollar pump repair bill.
And that's another thought, too.
So those are the issues. So, we actually, if you look, we changed the, the depth of water in the wells to be slightly higher, because we wanted to do more to protect that infrastructure. And in the past, with that running average, that number just kept dropping, and it did nothing to protect us. And so, um, obviously, we, we learn, and that's why I say we'll have to look at this every year, because as our demands and conditions change, um, it's, it's very difficult to, to determine everything. The way I look at it is, if there is no water in the river, then one hundred percent of what we're using is coming out of the aquifer.
Right.
And so obviously, the aquifer life is less if one hundred percent is coming out of it, as opposed to sharing it. Maybe it's Jason's glass of water, but the same concept, it, the aquifer is going to pull down much quicker if there's no water in the river to share the load.
But it sounds like it's a whole lot less than three months if we're destroying equipment, or we're, we're cavitating pumps. I mean, if that's where we were at in two thousand and six, it sounds like it was a whole lot less than three to six months from now, we're out of water.
That was, uh, we definitely have, what it does is, it reduces the volume that we can pull from each pump, so that ten million gallons really isn't ten million gallons, it might be six million gallons or seven million gallons with the lowered aquifer. So, we're trying to protect that aquifer level as much as we can, because it is truly our reliable source, but it does have a life expectancy.
And I guess, all of this is kind of a moot issue, until you reach a point where Canoplis is at half-capacity, and Milford Lake is seven and a half feet down.
Well.
And then it starts to become a concern, and I think that's where those are both at right now.
That's correct.
I was going to say, this is math I can understand, and that is, i- i- if I'm wrong, please, please let me know, but I would assume that the aquifer acts like a big glass of water, and sometimes it's really high. And what causes it to go down, there might be some natural, um, water dispersment or whatever, but probably usage. So I would assume, as we use less, that level begins to fill up more, so when we get to these drought conditions, it's less likely that we're going to have a drought. If we just sort of keep going out there willy-neely and watering lawns and doing whatever we do and using it up, when it comes to those drought times, rather than having a reserve up there, we've, we've blown it. It's like, we're living paycheck to paycheck. What I'm saying is, maybe we need, we need to save it for a not a rainy day. Come on, Martha, come on, that's, that was a joke, that's a good one. Save it for not a rainy day.
I'm, I'm looking for rain, so not a rainy day is hard for me to like. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did, and that's what I wondered, if there was going to be some increased costs due to that, because it sure sounded like that when we got down there, it was, it was a lot more hard on our equipment, too, so.
And we are replacing, if you remember, our downtown well field improvements, we're replacing four wells, which have lower screens, and we'll be able to produce the capacities we used to have through those. So, there is a cost with the groundwater levels being too low.
My other factor, commissioners, although it's not nearly as important as groundwater levels and recharge and all that, is just, when you are, when you're into the warnings and emergencies where you're affecting people, one of the things we tried to do in this plan is, compared to the prior plan, is not have a light switch that we'd have to turn off and on very quickly, because that's confusing to the public.
Right.
There could be, also be some confusion if we have too many different triggers for private well versus public water users, and someone asking themselves, well, does that apply to me, or does it not? So any way you can standardize it from an implementation, it helps you. Again, it's not nearly the, the type of issue that we just talked about, but that's, that's some of the benefit from that.
Seems like our trash study, I think, is the same thing. We're sort of looking at the overall easiest to utilize plan, it may not be a hundred percent perfect, but it's kind of the best that we can, we can do, I think, is, is maybe where we're, where we're headed with this.
Yeah, for me, when it's, speaking of, of a resource, um, it's really taking the most conservative route ever possible.
Yeah.
And if, if we know what our, what our disappearance rate is a better way to put it, by pumping and by leakage and by all of that, what that is, and, and how long we've been in drought conditions, uh, and we overlay those on top of each other, um, then, then that, to me, is what really means something, because if you can have a six-month drought condition, and you can pump your water empty in three months, uh, then eventually, you could have a real serious issue when the river runs dry. Uh, if those numbers are opposite, then you're never going to reach that condition. Uh, you know, if the longest drought theoretically that we've had was six months, and it takes fourteen months to pump our groundwater empty, then it's, and then it becomes a moot issue. Uh, so, that's what concerns me, is when I look at the data that way, um, then, then it shows us that our, our groundwater, uh, albeit as large as it seems, won't outlast the droughts that we've experienced as far as length, when we get to that point. Um, and I think that's our responsibility, uh, to, to preserve that.
And, and we have, uh, maintained forty years of groundwater data, and you can basically see the highs and lows, that kind of follows about a ten-year pattern. Drops, then it raises, then it drops, and we, we are in that dropping notion now. In oh-six, I think the drought was five, six years long, and now we're two or three years into a drought, and obviously, we don't know what that end date is, so we're being as cautious as we can and utilizing the river water, um, every drop we can, to preserve the groundwater level. And I think they, the staff has done a good job of that. We've learned a lot in five or six years.
And I would say to the, to the, to the citizens that are watching or listening, just listening at our usage rates. I mean, that, that's good to hear. We're not at, at two hundred, and the national running average is at a hundred and five. Uh, we are, we are showing some better things, and, and back to the rain gauges and, and the different things that we do to inform people, uh, and try to be, uh, conserve our water, it's, it shows that we do have that kind of an impact. Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion or questions, uh, of the commission?
If I could respond to Commissioner Householder?
Please come on up.
Now, I will take up very much more of your time. Uh, I just wanted to respond to, to something you said, Commissioner Householder, about the, uh, about the, the two glasses scenario and stuff. First off, we have to understand that for every foot of water in that aquifer liquid, you know, foot of water in that aquifer, our glass is four-point-one billion gallons, and just directly under the city of Slina. So it's a pretty big glass to begin with. The second thing is, is that our glass, as the scenario is proposed by Mr. Gage, our glass has someone, you know, a waiter pouring into it, we'll call it Solomon, okay, or we'll call it, uh, we'll call it Smolin, and our, and, and we have a discharge out there, you know, a leak in our glass, we'll call it Solomon. And whatever is coming in, is going to come in and maintain whatever level that is. What is not used by the citizens of Slina, by the city, by anything, by anyone else, goes on down the way, okay? Now, that's not to say that we should be wasting water, but I am saying that, that if it's not utilized by us, it will be on down the road to neighboring communities. That might be something you guys want to do, but if you want to, you know, tell the citizens that they need to, they need to shut their water off, to, to, uh, to sacrifice their plants, to sacrifice their lawns, to sacrifice their property values, so on so forth, in order to benefit communities on downstream, then that's something that you guys need to decide. The last thing that I wanted to point out is that although this does have, uh, some, some good measures in there about the, about the rain sensors and stuff like that, um, it also does have those restrictions in there on daily watering, uh, schedules, such as, you know, Monday, uh, Wednesday, Friday, uh, scheduling, stuff like that. And there's no mention whatsoever about smart irrigation technology, which, uh, actually has, uh, uh, through SWAT initiative, through the Irrigation Association, has proven itself to be, uh, dramatically reduce, uh, water usage in the, uh, in the landscape industry, um, by twenty-five to fifty percent in some studies. Uh, these types of controllers, uh, actually schedule themselves. So, when you go in and you apply a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, you're negating that technology one hundred percent. So, so that's something that, uh, that I, I'd also like to see, you know, uh, see the, the city address, um, as far as like a variance on someone that has this high-end technology that is, uh, capable of, of, of running itself, you know, maybe that's something that could be, uh, could be itemized out or something like that, if people wanted to, to put that in place. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a valid, valid point. I, I, maybe Ms. Tasker's familiar with that system, and I, and I don't think that that would be a problem to, if it truly is as efficient and that's the way it works, I, I think that that's.
Uh, we, we have looked at that system, and that's why I made the comment, as smart as we think we are, we've probably looked at everything that'll become an issue. We've got to look at this every year and, and just learn with it.
Make exceptions.
And try to do the right thing, so I anticipate things like that will come along, and it'll make sense, and, and that, through the, an additional resolution, we'll come back and modify those as we learn. We've, we spent a lot of time trying to do all the right things, but I know we've missed some important factors that'll come up, so those type of things, we're open to looking at, and adding as the time and budget allows us to do so.
And, and you are familiar with that system? I, I'm not, I hadn't heard.
I've done a lot of research and followed it, there's, uh, some positions are really strong about it, and then you can find others that didn't think it was as effective, so there's pros and cons, almost everything, so, but we'd be glad to put a system in and follow it and watch it and evaluate it.
Is your plan and directive always to pull as much out of the river first, primarily, so to?
That is the directive, and, uh.
Okay, I thought that was, and I, I think the, the, the first comment needs that to be understood. The goal is not to pull out of the groundwater and just let the river smoke on by for the downstream users, that we want to use our release.
We pull as much as we possibly can, we have to take into account the temperature of the river water, and how that deals with going through our treatment plants, and whether it starts getting the water to a temperature that it creates main break. So, we have to balance what we use, but, um, Kurt and his staff, I think, have pulled every drop of water out of the river that's possible. They've done an outstanding job.
Thank you. Bring this issue back to the commission for any final discussion and action.
I move to read out the resolution number thirteen-sixty-nine-nine-two.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? I know we had talked about the meeting, I think, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to adopt number, uh, resolution number thirteen-dash-six-nine-nine-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried five-zero.
Mayor, quick question on the second item related to the ordinance, I'll, uh, kind of target this over to, uh, Ms. Tasker and to, to Greg. It, one of the steps that, uh, Ms. Tasker referred to was that the city manager would send a letter to the chief, or chief engineer of DWR, Division of Water Resources, providing delegation of authority under KSA, and I'll read it all to you, but anyway, to implement the two thousand and thirteen plan. So obviously, we'd need to receive final authority from the chief engineer, and the question is, is the way the ordinance is set up right now, is it goes into full effect upon the first and second reading and then publication, and that the, the suggestion is whether or not we should go ahead and put as a contingency before it goes into full force and effect, the receipt of the, uh, letter from the chief engineer that provides final approval, uh, providing that delegation of authority.
I would, I would think we'd want to require that.
That's the, that's the intent, but I left a few words out, but we do want that.
Include that in the motion.
So basically, verbiage modification?
Prior to second reading, received approval from, uh, DWR.
Go ahead, you did the ordinance, you go ahead and finish it out.
Oh, she's, okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cropper did it, go ahead.
I'll defer to you, Commissioner Householder.
Oh, great. So, so we're going to, we're just going to let that happen between first and second reading? Okay. So then I would move that, uh, we adopt on first reading ordinance thirteen-dash-one-zero-six-eight-four, meaning chapter forty-one, article two, division three, section forty-one dash sixty-one, forty-one dash sixty-one point one, and forty-one dash sixty-two of this line of code pertaining to water conservation.
Second.
And as a point of clarification, with the, uh, approval before second reading from DWR.
Yes, BWR, yeah. Or, no, no, not, I said BWR, that's not, yeah, DW.
D.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is second to approve ordinance number thirteen-dash-ten-six-eight-four on first reading, uh, and that approval prior to second reading be received from the DWR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried five-zero. We move on to other business?
I move to recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss legal counsel matters, uh, subject to attorney client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interests, and also for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at ten, six-ten.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn into executive session for attorney-client and for personnel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're currently in executive session with a short break beforehand. Do we expect any action?
We do not.
Okay.